There, we got it.
I'm gonna drive to drive at least five directions.
Bringing in siding, I'm feeling underprepared.
Okay, today is, uh, April, April 26th is the regular meeting of the Beaufort Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Yeah, we're gonna start a new tradition as all the boards are now in Beaufort, so we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. It'll be on the agenda for now. So tonight, we have three items to consider. We have a determination of applicability, a site plan amendment, and a site plan application. I see that all the applicants before us are familiar with our process, so I don't have to go into depth with that. And before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions need to go through the chair. I'd also like to thank Jess for doing our minutes tonight, Courtney's on vacation. Just don't hesitate to ask, get a recall on the vote, or ask us to slow down, or anything you desire.
Sherry, I'll make a motion on the minutes when you're ready for more.
Okay, sure. Did I declare a court?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, well.
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, minutes. Go ahead, Lori.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the April 12th meeting minutes as drafted.
Do I have second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. And how about the sidewalk?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the sidewalk.
Fourteen.
Thank you. As drafted.
Do I have second? All in favor?
So who was the second?
I was Tim.
Do you know all of our names, Jess?
Mm-hmm.
So you could.
Yeah, I've got all of them. I said you're a neighbor, I know.
So, our first item is a determination of applicability for the grace note in In Spa. I think the blondes would like to open to the public of their dining. So, I just wanted to start this off. I actually met with Randy, and I really, and I'm open to being wrong about this. I really could not see a precedent here for, for needing to come before the board. I mean, there is not a different, um, restaurant license for being open to special events, and open to your guests. To me, it's more towards marketing. You're gonna start marketing more to the public.
Right.
I just wanted to cross my Ts and dot my Is. And we really appreciate it, and it was definitely.
Almost a change of use.
Is what?
It's almost a change of use. I'm not saying it's not right, but.
I know where you're coming from.
What you're doing is, you're changing the usage of the, of the property from, um, catering to the customers that they have for the bar and the B and B to the public. And that, to me, is a change of use.
Well, it, I don't know if I, if, but there's not a different license. But I tried, I thought, but she's been doing these dinners, which she's licensed for, for like, no, she did fundraiser for the MLT, and for maybe the River Fund, and I went to one of these events. So it's been very much open to the public.
Hey, can I say something?
Yeah.
The other thing is, people that showed up for these dinners purchased tickets, so they really kind of weren't purchasing a dinner.
Yeah, but they weren't. In that work, in that case, they, they just didn't stop off the street. They, they were pre-arranged guests, purchaseable tickets.
Right, right.
Don't have to say.
Well, yeah, the reservation.
Yeah. I just couldn't, I actually did sit down with Randy for an hour, and we scoured. And we could not find evidence or anything, you know, within our code that would say it was a change of use, or, or anything like that. I don't know, I'd like to hear from other people on the board to see if.
Did, did, is there an indication that, Brenda, you have to go before the selectmen, or a different type of licensing currently?
No, because all the requirements, well, I, we just simply came last time just to say, can we have events? Again, to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is. The requirements from the state are absolutely the same. You have to have, you know, your commercial equipment, your, your, uh, commercial venting, and, and, and cell system, so it's all the same. You know, uh.
But don't the selectmen grant a special license for.
They, they do.
For restaurants and.
But it's vehiculars, right?
Do you have your vehiculars? Do you have your vehiculars license?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we have a full, we have a whole ton of liquor licenses.
And she's got her license, she's got her.
Yeah.
Sure, the only thing I could think of, and I think this is a problem, is, uh, more extended use in term, are you still planning to use your enclosed trash disposal system?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Building?
Yeah.
And that, that won't mean you're, with this, you're not bringing on to the, uh,
No.
dumpster, or anything like that, that system that you created? Is sufficient to?
Yeah.
That would be the only question I have, as to whether any standard would have changed.
The only standard I see as changes is, is the type of guest.
Yes.
And the frequency of the type of guest. But other than that, I just want to be consistent.
And, and I, I believe that it does not require site plan review. On the other hand, I think that whatever, if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion that reflects the fact that I don't believe it requires site plan review, again, but that it is, um, it should say something like, consistent with all previous appro, you know what I mean? What are we gonna say that doesn't leave you in a quiet mind when you come before this board and had said, "I wanna make sure I've done everything properly"?
One thing I talked to Randy about is like, I have something in the file. So, we talked about taking the letter that Brenda wrote, and we can sign and date that as a board, and put that in the file, 'cause that's where we get ourselves into trouble. Is, you know, somebody comes forward as well, you know, there's a change here, and you guys didn't do anything about it, so that we have something in there. The other thing is, uh, is parking. Randy and I discussed that, and I said, "Randy, I went to an event that was sold out there, and there was ample parking. No one was parking in it, too."
Do you, you had grease traps and stuff already?
Do we have our who?
The grease trap and stuff?
Oh, yeah, we had the grease trap from.
I thought you did.
From long ago. Yeah. The whole property was built to have a 70-seat restaurant, from the get-go. When COVID hit, we said, "We're out of our minds." Now that life is normal, we're like, people say to us all the time, "Why don't you start having dinner? Why don't you have to start having dinner?" You know, like, finally found a chef that we really love. Yeah, we live on the property. It has to, uh, it has to be a quiet environment. It has to be, it's our home, you know, no garbage, no junk. So, so all I have to say about that.
So, I don't, I understand where Bob's coming from. Understand where Lori's coming from. I don't think, I think that the letter will suffice, because if we go by the fighting facts, this won't work, because it's all. It doesn't talk about anything about it's made of a restaurant, it says.
It's the old one.
It's the old one that says she wants to add a 12-by-20, and she wants to add this, and she wants to add that.
I think that was given to us.
No, that is the, that is, that is what she's doing.
She's already done all that stuff.
Right, yeah, okay, my mistake.
Well, she already came through and got, got approval for the share.
I found the findings of facts related to the last.
Already has.
Oh, what, what are you writing at?
I'm already looking at the findings of facts that came to package.
Oh, oh, the old findings of fact, okay.
No, this, the new finding of fact, well, what came in the new package?
Yeah, I think she just, I think what Courtney did, maybe we'll check that. Yeah, she's dated on that. That's the old findings of fact that she just gave us to help us.
Reference.
With this, as a reference.
Okay, if, if it was just for reference, that, that's fine. But I, I, I think that that letter, if we just all sign that, that way it shows that we did something, and we're covering our tails, she's covered. That's my thought.
Okay, before, um, Mitchell, what do you think?
I, I don't think any actions required on our part, so I'm happy to approve as expeditiously as possible.
Okay.
I agree.
Sue, Bob, how do you think we should move forward?
I just want to be consistent with what we do. You know, I was thinking, I was looking at Google Academy's little lot up there, and they wanted to put that shooting range in, and then, hey, they had to come before the planning board. I mean, that, that lot up there, it was recreational, and you still made them come before the planning board.
Because they installed new infrastructure. They installed physically new.
What are we talking about?
Pine Hill.
The Pine Hill.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So the lights and the poles and.
They're still, I own Pine Hill.
Right.
I mean, the whole Pine Hill is recreation. If you put it under the Big Bailey Wick of what's going on, it's recreation, regardless of what's there. They're serving the public as a restaurant, regardless of how they do it. But they're, they're doing it a different way.
Right.
I just, I just want discussion, so that we do things consistently, that's why I want it.
Right, and, you know, I think that's what we all want, and we all want to work towards precedence, and not, not being inconsistent, and I, I appreciate that. That Pine Hill situation is, they've been doing things, they decided that they wanted to do sort of a master plan, and start coming to the board. It was really their call, um, and I think it's been, 'cause they, they want to grow that significantly, so that's why we started.
I thought one of the reasons they came to us also was because of the lighting and the butters. They didn't want any butters to be angry, and it gave the butters the chance to come in and say if they had a problem with it. That was, that was my comment.
Do you think we should do a flagrant thing to it?
I don't think so, just as long as we know that what we're doing is according to code, and that it's consistent with what we've done in the past, so that we don't set a precedence. I can bring up something else, but I won't.
No, but why not? I mean, but I don't, because I was just gonna, you, four or five times you've talked about consistency, with being consistent with that, so I don't know what you mean by that. So, it, I think it has to be explicit. It needs to be explicit if you think, because I fully agree with you, I fully agree with you. And if, if, if it's not consistent, then we need to, to know. But it sounded like the example that you did bring up was actually not comparable. But is there another one? That it's showing that this would be inconsistent, or not be consistent? I don't know.
Are you looking at me, so I think I'm in trouble?
We just did one Chatham Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As opposed to Dr. Young's place. And in Dr. Young's place, when, when they put that addition on the back there, I mean, you, you, you went through everything. You looked at the windows, you looked at the locations, you looked at the doors. I mean, it just went on and on and on. One Chatham Street was not that way.
Because you already did it.
Yeah, but we didn't look at it.
Well, I, I, I feel like.
They changed the building.
Well, taken, but.
Yeah.
We did have the opportunity individually to go up and look at it. I looked at all the files, and I feel like the representations in the application and his presentation were not inaccurate. Sherry, for the sake of timing here, 'cause we brought it before us, I will make the following motion. I move that we make a determination that in the new site plan approval for the addition of dining for the public as, um, written in the letter from the, um, the bond. Why can't I say your name to them?
Wrong. Because I'm gray now.
Doesn't, as I said, did not require a site plan approval, because there are no additional, um, modifications to the exterior site or interior of the building in order to accommodate it. And that we recognize this as, um, consistent with all other regulations that we're governed by, and sign a letter seeking that, that is seeking that determination, to show we approve it.
I'm looking at it to Lori, and I started it.
Can, can, can you read that?
You want it read, that letter read?
No, not the letter.
My motion of poorly words and.
You made the motion.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to take it again.
Yeah.
Okay, so, she moved to make a determination to not need, to, to not need a new site plan approval for dining, for the public, for the applicant, since, since no modifications to the exterior or interior are needed. Doing this so that it makes sense. And, um, to recognize it's consistent with all other regulations.
Could you just say due to previous licensures and?
Yes.
Approvals.
Yes.
That better says.
Good thing I can read my crazy license. Due to previous licensures and applications?
And approvals, and it's approved this project.
All right, so. Move to make a determination, um, not, to not need a new, I worded that a little bit better, not needing a new site plan approval for dining, for the public, for the applicant, since no modification to the exterior or interior are needed, um, are needed, and is, and, are needed, and, uh, and due to previous licensure and application.
Approvals.
Approvals. Licenseur and approvals.
They should say by the applicant.
By the applicant. Okay, so Lori's made a motion, do I have a second?
Have a second.
On paper? Okay, thanks. So moved, um.
So you want us to sign this?
Yeah, let's have this written here. Just, just as a side note. When those minutes are done, we've never done them before, but we kind of quick that, cut and paste that on a piece of paper and staple it to that letter.
Okay, I have to borrow some of these kind of. So I will take that letter included with all the stuff that's, Courtney's, I'll make sure it's on her desk.
Right.
We'll make sure that gets attached to it.
She'll question that, because we've never done it like this before.
And then I will write up the minutes and put it on her desk.
Okay.
Well, I think still we're coming up against really weird situations from COVID. I mean, I think, you know, this, again, she planned on opening a restaurant, COVID started, well, why open a restaurant, you're just gonna lose your shirt, you know, now things have changed. It's stuff we've never run up against.
Yeah, and you're, and you're right. Finding the right chef. So. I'm just the next.
Speaking of feeding.
That is hot, Randy.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy.
Hello.
We're next.
You got to have me nervous.
All right, Brenda, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, um, do you know where that is?
It's beside the old junk hole.
Communication issue, um, at the last meeting, so, um. There's one that, the one that's closer to town. Not on top of the.
Do you know where Chandler Hill is? Okay, halfway between Chandler Hill and Hancock.
You guys can explain better than that. Give them the real explanation.
Okay, let me tell you the real truth about where this is. Do you know the burned-out house with all the burned-out cars?
I know it's just getting cleaned up today, too.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna ask Randy about that.
Is that your stuff? No, no, it's on my stuff.
Nightmare.
Oh, my God.
No, it's just, but it's made his life crazy.
Right next to it, yeah.
So, yeah, it's next door to that.
I've gotten passed on the back in town for keeping my composure through all of that.
Yeah, you did better than I would have done.
I'm a lot better.
You're a lot better for that. Okay, so, do you want to give us a, I mean, I think it's very easy to figure it out. You just want to do a little addition on the back and add some more units?
I'm an open book, yep, I'm gonna do, uh, I built the back building so big that it's gonna be easy for the addition. I'm gonna die right into the flat. The back building is 36 wide, I'm gonna shrink it down to 30, so I'll be able to go right into a flat. I won't have to match up the sidewalls or the roofline. I'll be able to go right into the flat. I'm gonna do just like a basic, like, five or six 12-pitch roof. The back pitch is, one of the buildings I'm going into is like a 10-12, so it should look good coming off the back. And I'm just gonna do the 30 by 50 with five minutes on each side.
Okay.
There'll be a light on each side, down-facing light. The siding will match beige with green architectural shingles. And, uh, fascia and soffit will also be green, and match, everything will match.
You know, it's interesting, it's nice to, to see what you've done with that property. We've seen the improvements over the years.
Trying.
Um, okay, so I guess if we're really going further with this.
This is the addition thing here.
Yeah.
A little black piece of tape.
Where?
Right, yeah.
Oh, I think, uh, um, the.
The little dark spot.
Helper.
The closest one to the railroad tracks. So.
Courtney did that part, I, she helped me do that, 'cause I didn't have that part.
I, I can't, I can't find my notes, but I did, I think they're in last week's pack, which is probably in my bag. I did, just to help you, so that you didn't go too far. With Randy and I, we'll contact the railroad company and make sure that you, where their right-of-way is, 'cause the last thing you wanted to do is get an engine on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Overexceeded right-of-ways.
Well, the, uh.
And you have, you have.
Yeah, well, the power line is before the tracks. So I think I probably have some kind of regulations with the power lines before the tracks.
We didn't ask on that. Usually the power is kind of a little more lenient than the rail.
I do, I'm like, right on the line of the shoreline zone, and Randy, I explained to him it's no chemical storage, no, what people usually store is hard goods, furniture, uh, you know, uh, it's right on my contract, no storing of hazardous materials, paints, liquids, uh, illegal things, stuff like that. Uh, mother-in-laws, nothing like that.
No mother-in-law.
No mother-in-law.
No grenades.
Yeah, I could, I could comment on that. So, I guess I need a motion that this application is complete.
I'll make the motion.
On paper? And the second motion I need is standing.
I'll make the motion that the applicant has standing, is done with documentation.
One second.
On paper? Okay.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Sue, to access on the sides, your roadway in is sufficient?
Oh, yeah, uh, I actually ended up getting some free fill from Gordon's. They're doing that project in, uh, Bryant Pond. And it's, uh, the stuff they had was all paid for. It was all approved DOT, uh, stable base for road construction. And so they had a few loads left over, so I was actually able to, like, dress up the sides recently and make it a little bit nicer.
But nobody drives around the addition?
Yep.
They, they can't, they'll be able to drive around either, so it's unmooked?
Yeah.
Makes sense for fire, too, probably.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, this is something I'm personally concerned about with storage, but not with yours, but I'll ask you. Do you have any intentions of allowing people to store anything outside their unit, on the premises?
No, I might, uh, I have a little bit of space to maybe do like, one or two boats. I was thinking about maybe doing a ship wrap, uh, a shrink-wrapping business, mobile, and going to people's houses and wrapping boats. But there's not enough room on the property for any kind of stores like that. I mean, maybe I could store like, a one or two boats, but.
Is that your, do, do, I mean.
I don't plan on doing that, no.
I just think it.
Yeah.
Starts to look.
Yeah.
Less than desirable, and, and, even, I'm saying that, next, knowing what you have next door, so. So just, I'm not.
He could have, he could have a dump pile out there, it would still be more attractive.
I know, I know, I know.
We said, we, we were involved in the permitting of that property next door.
I tried to buy it, and they didn't take my offer.
This is so, not, none of my business. I heard it sold.
Yeah, they, they, well, here's what happened. The town got ripped off by it, um, so the town had accumulated probably about $10,000 to $20,000 in fines on the property to Deutsche Bank. So Deutsche Bank sent a sliding lawyer to the town, and they said, "Hey, we're gonna clean it up, but you don't want to pay that $20,000 fine you put on us." And so, uh, the Beaufort was like, "Okay, we'll drop it, as long as you clean it up soon." So as soon as the town dropped it, they sold it. And now somebody else is thinking, they didn't want to get stuck with the, with the, with the fine. So they hurried up and sold it, and they bundled it together with five other crappy houses in the area for $100,000, I offered 10, and so it broke down to $20,000, the world was paid for the house. So, uh, I didn't get it. Some guy from Texas bought it.
Oh, wow.
He's gonna make it into an Airbnb. So I was gonna tear it down. So. But he said, with the last I talked to him, he said if he makes out good on the other four houses, and they're profitable, um, he would sell it to me for the 20. So at that point, I'd buy it and tear the house down.
So these other four properties were ones that had taxes owed?
It must have been, yeah. But he said this, the Hammel place was the worst one out of all five. So, and it, it's like building, telephone poles, there's no foundation.
Oh. There's nothing.
It's a mess. Somebody died in it.
Oh.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's, that's, that's the place he's talking about.
Or this is here.
That's the one.
Okay, well, sorry, thank you for telling us that, it's really.
No, sorry, it was pent up.
I know, I know. Um, we've all been watching it. So, anyway, are, are we ready to start? Taking a look at the findings of fact?
We'll go page by page.
Yeah, we can go page by page. And let me know if, are you all?
Yep.
Good with page one?
I think it's just that it says it's requesting a waiver of the financial, but you provided a letter from the bank, so.
Uh, that was, I think, when I applied to Courtney before.
That was, that was.
Oh, previous, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
She wanted to make sure there was some kind of funding, and so I went to the bank. Where I have the loan for, there's one that I built.
Yeah.
But I'm getting ready to sell a house lot off in Bryant Pond that I'm developing, into a house lot. So I'm gonna take that money, pay off the $40,000 loan that I owe on the back building that I just built, and that'll wipe me clean, and then I'm gonna take a new loan for the addition.
Okay, I understand why that's what we have.
So we're good on page one? How about page two? Okay. And page three?
Why does this page three? Where's this page three?
Oh, it does.
Wow, and then it says three in the signature.
Because, because that's the, that's. Because, because that's the, that's the case with the...
Oh, interesting. How about page four?
Number thirteen.
Additional improvements.
Nothing's more problematic.
Thirteen about additional improvements, Jim? You wanna talk about that?
No, we gotta push on for a minute.
I say we put an A and say, "Additionals required."
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, applicable.
Is everyone good with that?
That's on page five. Yeah, we don't put an A? Top of page five.
An A.
And because of, uh, uh, we're just gonna...
No additional improvements required.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, number eighteen, any other reason?
Parking?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah, um, additional parking? There's no parking?
It doesn't change the flow either of the drive, so, um...
And you, you're not allowing somebody to park their car outside their unit, right?
While they're getting into it.
Yes, but I meant beyond their access and...
No, somebody tried that before, and I shut it down real quick. They tried 'cause they rented a unit that could live there out back, and so, I had to explain, uh, no.
Might be onto a new business here. No parking needed? What, what's your reasoning, Jim? What do you think your reason should be?
That sounds fine.
No parking needed?
No, no. Yeah.
It's drive-through and...
No parking needed and, uh, circulation is, um, dead.
Well, but you, I don't know, Jim, but you do when you go to your...
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
No permanent parking. Long-term, good, whatever one you think.
Long-term?
Yeah.
Sorry, Jess.
Not needed.
And, uh, there's adequate driving circulation around the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, page six.
Uh, I got DOT approval to make sure it wouldn't change any, uh, road traffic or anything.
Well, good.
And you just do those two single lights, or...
Uh, uh, it's gonna be a dusk to dawn, small down facing light on each side, uh, in between the doors. And then, I'm one offense about putting one on the very, uh, gable, uh, back, uh, because of thieves. And so, uh, that would be the only thing that I didn't have in on the permit. I'm gonna have one on each side, but depending, like, how vulnerable the back is, where the tracks are, I might have to, uh, depending on if that's an issue.
I think that would be smart, I'd be able to put one back there.
Okay. There's no houses or anything, so it wouldn't disturb anybody.
Should we add that to it, like, come on?
I know, we can do that there.
Yeah, 'cause you've got a bar down here only two.
Um, so, how do you want that state of less, uh, that, uh...
No exterior lighting.
Yeah, so...
Just no lighting on rear building.
Yeah, so, there would be potential...
So, under B, just add, and there'll be three lighting, one on each side, each of the three sides of the new addition.
Yep.
Jess, you good with that? So, we've got that. Anything else?
I'll just ask, is this the, unless you come to be the proud owner of the lot next door, is this the ending expansion of this?
Yeah, I won't be able to take it any further.
Is it just a question?
'Cause I'm getting ready to start something in Brian Pond. I talked with Vern, and I'm gonna build storage in Brian Pond, want some land I have there. But I wanted to maximize my square footage at the Bethel first, before I start a new project, 'cause I have ADD, and I'll start a hundred and fifty.
Oh, I can... We definitely need it.
Apartments is what I really wanna be doing. I mean, housing around here is really hard. Well, just like apartments, what they're going for in town right now, twelve, fourteen hundred bucks for a one-two bedroom apartment.
You should start renting new units.
How are you, how are you doing with construction?
Uh, probably be the same as when I built the back building, it'd be myself and, uh, Ron Savage's lead framer, Carl. Uh, he helps me with all my projects. Um, and it's just me and him.
You're gonna have a construction dumpster?
Huh?
Construction dumpster?
I usually just put it right in my truck and go to dump.
Jim, are you saying that something is changing with that? 'Cause you brought this up before.
What is it?
Hasn't changed.
And it's also in the book, it's in the code, that you're only allowed, you have one pickup per entire job.
Okay. Really? Can you show, 'cause with so much, sorry?
Oh, there's one.
Can you show me? Can you brought this up before and...
I mean, I have a dump sticker for Greenwood, so I can go there if you want.
Well, no, we're, we're wrangling as a town with the, with the dump right now, and as a board, we're wrangling with dumpsters and screening, so...
Usually, like, all the cutoffs and stuff, I save for Kenla, or put it out front for people.
Yeah.
Uh, shingles would be minimal waste on shingles, 'cause it'd be new construction. And, um, but pretty much any of the, I hoard all my building materials. If I got a two-foot cutoff, I'll save it and use it for blocking or something.
Jim thinks that there's...
It's in, there's a code in here.
There's a code that says you have to have a construction dumpster.
No, it doesn't say you have to have a construction dumpster. It says you are limited to one pickup truck load per job, entire job.
We've got some kind of language that...
And it is, and there is that you have to have a construction dumpster on commercial...
This says, "From building permits issued for construction exceeding fifty thousand in value is stated in the permit application, a viable container for all lawful private disposal of all waste materials generated by permit activities shall be maintained on the parcel identified in said application, or at a separate location identified in the permit application and controlled by the permit holder."
But that's Randy, he needs to deal with Randy about that now, Wes. 'Cause it's part of building permit.
In the code, under, under the code, "An estimate of quantities of materials to be excavated and a plan for onsite or legal offsite disposal thereof. No stumpage may be taken to the transfer station. Six cubic yards only of construction waste and debris, demolition debris, cleaning debris, masonry, sheet rock, and asphalt material may be taken to the transfer station from a single project."
Only one truckload? Is that commercial?
Six cubic yard.
Well, with Greenwood, I, we pay twenty-five dollars if you're a contractor, and they give you a ticket in Greenwood, and you are, and that's your pass for jobs, like, if you're a carpenter or a tradesman.
But I, I don't think we can, Randy, we can, I don't think we can consider saying Greenwood will handle the...
Well, no, no, I'm not taking it to Greenwood. I'm just saying, I, I have a Greenwood pass, and what it, not that I'm taking it there, but, um, they have a, a special pass that you buy for construction debris. I didn't know if Bethel would have.
I think we're working on something.
Bethel, Bethel, Murray, and Hanover are tri, are tri-town transfer station.
Yep.
This stuff is all being addressed on how to deal with construction waste and the tipping fees and the whole bit. The stuff is coming down the pipeline, there is changes being made.
Yep.
Greenwood does not allow Bethel residents, Murray residents, Hanover residents to take to their station.
Yep.
The same as we're not supposed to allow Greenwood residents.
Well, I just didn't know if there was, like, a ticket.
So, it, it, it is in the process of, of getting worked on. It's probably at this rate, still another two years before that's even together.
The dumpster's not an issue.
But I feel like it's, and it, it's, it's a standard for a building permit. We don't issue a building permit. So, he needs to address and show what, to Randy, what his plan is, but we don't have to.
Well, that's actually in cycling review. It's in the code, cycling review.
Says, under what section?
Under one fifty dash five, section Z.
And what does it say?
It says, "An estimate of quantity of materials to be excavated and a plan for onsite or legal offsite disposal thereof. No stumpage may be taken to the transfer station. Six cubic yards only of construction waste and debris, demolition debris, cleaning debris, masonry, sheet rock, and asphalt materials may be taken to the transfer station from a single project." So, an entire project?
No, I can't.
It only takes six cubic yards. Are you supposed to do with the rest of it? You're supposed to get a construction dumpster?
I'll have somebody come in.
But my waste for storage is, I, I keep most of it. It's, it's literally two-by-fours, roof trusses, plywood.
I'm not again...
It's not, it's not drywall or plastic or wood or nothing like that.
Well, what if we say, "Alphabet agrees to the six cubic yards"?
So, if you go, if you go to page...
See, I'm just gonna dumpster, like, three hundred bucks.
Wait, 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 what page?
Go to page one forty dash eight.
I mean, the addition's gonna cost me, like, seventy. I don't mind paying three hundred for a dumpster. Seventy thousand.
It's not necessary, and it's an additional expense. Seventy thousand? Because you've determined...
And by the time I get all the garage door...
You got one by the building part.
Yeah, that's fine, please.
So, and under Z...
Building permit.
Huh?
And then that goes back to building permit, so...
I don't know, I don't know how.
Well, it won't hurt, uh, it won't hurt for us to add as a condition of approval...
But the applicant indicates that he will manage the construction, um, debris, uh, such that it will not, um...
In accordance with all...
Oh, yeah, in accordance with all Bethel coordinates, very good.
Okay, we'll add that as a condition. Hey, Jess, you can add that.
Managing construction debris in accordance with all Bethel's regulations.
It's on him, not us.
You know, you know, we need to be consistent.
We haven't been saying this to anyone.
We, we have, we have required other construction sites to, we've addressed the issue of dumpsters.
But that's for permanent, you know, that's like a restaurant, that every day is gonna be, no?
Construction, construction managers. We've required others.
Yeah.
But it sounds like, from what we're hearing him say, the, the quantity of actual debris throwaways could be very little. So, you might be taking spare...
If you got a lot of weights, you're, you're, you're figuring things out wrong.
Yes.
It's gotta be one-foot, six-inch cutoffs.
Yeah, he's, he's gonna reuse, repurpose, and has very little leftover stuff.
Yep, and like Jeremy Fredette, he'll help me do the roof. He has his own, like, dump passes and stuff like that. He does, he works with ZinChalk, they do roofing. They have their own, like, dumpsters and stuff for their shingle stuff.
That's why I think the language we said, which was...
Whatever they put, they'll work.
Exactly.
Well, what I think is odd is that we have this fifty thousand dollar value.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he could be putting in marble columns, or he could be putting in Stixie Harvested Out of the Woods. I mean...
And likewise, unless that figure is updated annually, fifty thousand, ten years ago, is getting you a whole lot more than what fifty thousand is gonna get you today, so, I, I read it.
It's just odd that we have a number about, a monetary number.
The garage doors alone are...
Yeah, that number was updated like last year.
The most expensive...
Is it fifty thousand still?
Twelve hundred a piece, I'm sure.
We, is that your schedule of fees?
That's in the deed, there's no...
And, you know, so, we don't get stuck.
Right, and we're like...
Finding something that is...
And where is that, just something else you wish?
No, because it's not even an finding fact.
Well, then, let's move, let's, I, I move that we move ahead.
So, you're moving to approve the finding of that, is that what you're doing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, we're gonna have that condition of approval, and then Randy, Randy, you know, Andy Wright, the CEO, he may possibly say, "You need to have a dumpster." But we're just, we're wording it in a way to keep that open.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Bob?
I'll make the second for that motion.
Okay, um...
So, it's...
So, it's to approve the finding of fact with the additions, um, standard, condition of approval standard.
Same.
Related to the addition of the, of condition of approval, marriage, uh, manage the construction degree in accordance with all, uh, all applicable regulations about doing it. Right, so, to approve the finding of fact with the addition of the condition of the...
Are you guys good with this?
The construction debris?
So, we have a motion and a...
We have a second, so, my second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, what are we gonna sign?
It's, it's in here.
Uh, I would suggest...
I'm just trying to catch up, 'cause I wasn't clear when we did the other one, and I'm trying to figure out what the differences are, that's all.
I think Bob is good, you... Yeah, that might be good. Uh, the, when we're not discussing, I wanna know.
Yeah.
I think we have to do the ones that have the dimensions on them, because that's...
We can do these too. We can staple these to...
I was supposed to say staple it all together, but then I...
I'll, I'll start it. Are you ready? Go start it, you start it.
I'll go get a stapler, I'll have that. We are inventive. What's the date of date?
Twenty-sixth.
It would be nice to have that clarified, you know, that whole dollar amount and...
Tell it to, tell it to Jim, because that's an ordinance committee thing.
Yeah, to have it really specified out, because, and it does need to change every year.
I know, but it's unfortunate.
And so, we don't, we can't, nobody can set fees. It's not fourteen, it's set fees, and it's based on the fee schedule.
I'm talking about the dollar amount, that's crazy, I think, from the construction.
That, where's that in here?
It's under, um, building permit, uh, building instruction...
Ninety-six point five?
No.
So, I agree with you, because...
Yeah, ninety-six.
If it's a gold-plated building, then fifty thousand gets you a couple...
A door.
Yeah, a door. But I mean, so, it really should be by square footage.
Yeah.
Actually, that, wait a minute.
Here.
That has changed.
It hasn't in here.
Books have been updated, and it's not updated in the...
After town meeting.
Yeah.
We'll have more updates.
Town meeting, our book's gonna weigh twice as much as it does right now.
Well, actually, if they ever, if they ever get around to fixing the stuff they're working on...
Construction degree is then, like, huge hot fudge issue. Your project is, I mean, not pushing about it, but...
Ninety-six.
We have a lot of, so that's why it's a hot fudge issue, so...
What Savage and I do, just they have dumpsters?
Yeah.
We should have dumpsters, yeah.
I mean, I don't, not a...
Yeah, it's not really, we're literally...
Randy will tell you. So, we wrote it so that...
He can do it.
Randy can tell you.
If you, if you... Cubic feet, I mean, well, why go to that extra expensive, it's not necessary, that's the whole point, I mean...
I mean, you could be putting on a little teeny addition, but it's unbelievably expensive because of your materials, and there's no way you'd even have six cubic feet of waste. Or you could be putting in something giant, but you figured it out perfectly where there's no waste.
If it's done, if you, if your project is done right, you're not gonna get...
You know what it is, is the packaging materials, but...
Yeah.
That's the, it's not so much the materials, it's the stuff that comes in. Yeah. I think we're good. I think, uh, we're all done. Randy, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can run out of here if you guys change your minds.
Yes, definitely.
So, we're out.
We're onto Napa.
Sorry, you got me sweating.
We aren't mean, I have a...
No, we just wanna make sure I, D's and I's are...
We wanna make sure.
And your cover too.
You guys know, like, if you ever need to add, like, you could call me.
I discount.
Right, yeah. We will, yeah, and, you know, I'm sure Randy will.
Yep.
Randy's awesome.
I like Randy, he's been the most competent one in a minute.
He's reasonable, he's.
Yep.
I's are great.
Yep.
So good luck. Thank you for coming in.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so.
I won't let you down.
Okay.
Hello, hello?
These new colors?
These are new colors, so shall I?
Sure.
Okay, so just for the record for the TV, I'm on Shane with mainly at O'Leary Consultants. And we're here to present some of the updates we made to the plans, uh, for the Bethel store in Bethel, or the Napa store in Bethel, um, that reflects in the comments on the bedboard during the site walk in previous planning meeting. Um, one of them going with more earthy, earthy colors. I'll have to lean on John and Chris a little bit more if I mess anything up. Cause they had, uh, the conversations about colors, so it looks like mostly brown or replacing the gray with brown, more tanish, uh, darker tan color.
Natural.
Yeah, natural color. It still has some of the blue, the blue stripe. The sun's still there, but I guess the sun is. Natural. Really colored. So there's the color, but also dropping the, uh, peak roof height, uh, by four feet from thirty foot, nine inches to twenty six feet. Nine inches, so a four foot drop, um, which you can't really see here. But it looks slightly different on the elevation plan.
How did you guys decide to do that just because of the air conditioning and heating it would take to?
Do you remember why we, why we dropped the peak height?
I'm just being curious, it's not how it matters.
So we've built one very similar, um, in Bridgeton and we noticed that there was a waste of a lot of cubic footage. Um, so.
Makes sense.
You know, obviously costs comes into every consideration and.
So that, that's changing.
The higher was, you wanted, we might wanna be more parallel with other ones and no more.
Right, because of how, how you're sitting and the two other buildings are a little bit more, a little bit more slum.
So I think we're a little bit more aligned with the sportoma building there. Nothing else on the project change, you know, I mean, the.
Through the samples of what the actual material might look like?
We do, yeah. So, um, do you do just kind of a quick turnaround? I don't have all of the, um, the products you're gonna be using, the appropriate color. I do have all the products.
But Randy will have to determine that correct.
Well, I'm just looking at their credits.
Oh, okay.
And that was just a, a quote from a company that we deal with, usually they go and pull the town ordinance and stuff. Oh, but.
A lot of people do that, that's great.
So this is the, uh, dark bronze, brown color that we're representing with that. We are, um, proposing, um, the tando stone on the bottom section of the building. And if it's not the appropriate colors, this is the cap, it was the top of it. This cedar compression is on the front side of the building. Yeah. Here. Then, uh. I believe it was the, the first one. Oh, the espresso, that's right.
Oh, it's it.
Nice color, brown. For the steering. Yeah. Nice color, the orange.
There's a darker brown for some reason that they don't have in this one. I always wanted to.
And that relates to what? Why are you trying to have a sense?
This vinyl siding here, that's just the standard four inch, um, vinyl siding, certi mainstream, um, I, actually, not mainstream, but it's a certi product, it's the, the liner, um, the other line. So I apologize, I don't, we don't have a sample of that, that vinyl color, but it's a brown to match.
So remind us what the bron, bronze is that you just showed.
And that's all the steel building?
Yep, which is all the upper section of the building.
So the bottom section is.
Let's, yeah, let's.
Yes, we had to infill with, with stud and plywood and it's the only way we can really get the look that you guys are going for.
So the stone goes at the lower elevation?
Yes.
Yeah, I see it. And then you go up from that and you're working with what kind of material?
Vinyl siding.
Vinyl siding? And then steel up from the vinyl siding?
Yes.
Okay, and there, and what we've seen is the, um.
That's the steel.
That's the steel and the vinyl siding will be complementing that?
Yes.
In that same tone?
Yes.
Bronze brown tone?
I think it's in the monogram style up the main street, so I apologize for that.
And the stone is that color?
No, it'll be a dark brown.
That's all right.
I had a short notice and those were all the colors that we had used at the gray designs. So I just stuck with those. I figured the, uh, the elevation color, I mean.
And that is a cultural.
It's, you were installing it, um, on a, on a regular masonry, I think it's all, I think they call it a stack stone.
Stack.
Uh, peel stone is more of a.
I'm sorry to be shuffling, I'm looking for my timings of bats.
So the barn door is on the roof to side? Can you go to that? Just review the color, so the barn door colors will be.
Oh, got it.
All right. The barn doors are not distinguished black colors.
Not distinguished.
Just wanted to make. On the roof to side.
Which, which side is that right there?
That's the roof to side.
That faces roof to.
That faces roof to.
No, that, that sign is, that's twenty feet by something, that's way over the standard for tiny signs.
Or Randy will determine that.
You'll have to apply some weight, but that's a hundred and forty one, well, we're square feet. If, if that isn't.
Standard, they'll change it.
The standard for yours would be. Oh. It does, eighty square feet. Yeah, eighty, that, it doesn't, those feet's all over the.
So what were you gonna say about the barn door?
Uh, that's what I was trying to, they're, they're plastic, um, like AZAC material, uh, it's a plastic B board. No, no, it's a mimic trim board as well, five and quarter, or, or inch. Um, and, yeah, we use just all plastic materials for that installation and things like that.
Are they just decorative?
Nice.
Yeah. And that's, is that what's facing roof to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that color will look great between those two other buildings because one's a tan and the other one's a reddish brown and so it's, you're not gonna try to fight with either one of them, it'll almost like complement, I think it'll look good.
It will certainly still stand out.
That's what you're doing fifty five to sixty five.
You know that's low.
Easy for some people. Sue, did you get a chance to look over the, uh, the landscaping? I know you just, you'll. Their landscaping is, it's similar to next door. I mean, you know, my, my only concern was having flat, having it plowed where it was gonna block people driving down the highway to people leaving the, um, driveway or, you know, there's a little bit of a curve there. But then when I found out where the parking lot was, I was, it's set back far enough that you can, it'll be fine. It looked to me at first like it was right up to the edge of the road, but there's a good distance now. Yeah. I just looked at it wrong.
How deep is that water, waterfall, the?
How deep is the tension bar?
It's not much, it's just basically, it's gonna be too much as swell the same as where it is in Portoma.
Yeah, they do well with built up, um, materials now to slowly release the water down.
Yeah.
We learned a lot about that.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a big, it's hole, it's two, two feet. Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't, it's not gonna stand out as a, as a.
No, it's not attached.
Hole in the ground, it's, you almost can't even see it in Portoma.
Have you done any more discussion or has anything changed about the issues regarding tree removal or the, I think it was the well?
Do you have the back?
Um, so it was the butter that had.
Yeah, I mean, do you, do you, have you been able to get back there and do any further refinement of exactly how much has to come down for that to?
No, we didn't go back out and look at exactly what was gonna come down. I think, um, what's there now has changed since the plans were originally designed back.
Were you putting in for a while, you're just putting in a real well, right?
Yep, yeah, right back here.
Have to do some.
They do have to clear a little bit, I wish I could.
I would think it's like very, no, they can put those wells anywhere. Those touching hardly anything.
What's the, what's the buffer there Shay, what's the buffer supposed to be?
The buffer in the rear is twenty feet and it's twenty feet on the sides and thirty feet up front.
Yeah.
And so.
You were four.
Yeah, I were in the well, yes, that's what I remember.
You were well.
Well.
Okay, the well was, the well was further than twenty feet, it was.
Where you flagged, there was like very little davey around.
Yeah, we, we figured even with all those streets cut back, there's still, they're, they're twenty five to thirty feet from the property lot. Right, to the tree line.
What do you need for a motion to get this on the road?
We have to, do we have standing?
We haven't done.
No, we haven't done anything really. Um, we, uh, I, I need a motion that the applicant has standing.
So, second.
Um, favor?
That was Bob, who did the second?
She did.
Um, what about, uh, the application being complete?
I'll make the motion's complete, second.
On favor. Okay. Little housekeeping. All right, so we can go ahead, are you guys all ready to go right to the findings of fact?
The motion is, the, the application, who made the motion for the application was complete?
I am.
Jim.
Seconded by Bob.
All right.
So statements of fact.
Yeah, findings of fact here.
What's the date on yours? I'm using three twenty three, twenty three.
Yeah.
Three twenty?
Yeah. Do you have one?
I got names.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it's three twenty three.
All right. Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, so let's put page one, um. Okay, everybody good?
Yeah.
Page two. The wall of our easements, Jim? On here? Okay, page three? Everyone stop me if I go too fast. I know, I know you won't. Everyone good, page three?
Page three's fine.
Page four? Page five?
Well, I just, this is odd, um, my floor, it says, uh, number one under specific standards and she wrote, the applicant is before the planning board. You don't have any other approvals to get, nothing before DEP.
DB and DOT approval there.
Uh, I think it would be better to say that the, that, uh, to reflect the fact, and you had to get a, what kind of DEP approval?
DEP, let me just make sure, I don't miss, but I believe it was a stormwater permit by rule. It was, and that was submitted more than two weeks ago.
DEP storm water permit by rule has been obtained and MDOT approval has been obtained.
What, you, we've got them now?
Well, the stormwater permit by rule, you don't get an actual paper approval. If you don't hear anything, that means it's approved.
The DOT entrance permit was part of the original document.
Right.
What does that mean? Yes. Stormwater, the MD, no, um, DEP stormwater approval by, what did you say, call it, permit?
She's talking, I think, for under specific standards, but that's not where stormwater is.
Well, no, but I mean, no, but it just says. I just wanna make sure that we note somewhere that, I see below it says MDOT, but they got a stormwater, say one more time.
Permit by rule or?
Permit by rule.
PBR.
So you're looking at page three, number sixteen.
Is that what I'm looking at?
Well, we're looking at page four, number one.
Page four, huh?
So, yeah, under.
So where should that be noted?
Specific standards, what she wrote down.
I noted on page four, one, conformance of otherwise.
I just didn't, we have never said this language before.
I know, yeah, it's like the tax law.
That's not the right.
Okay, yeah, we got it.
That's not the right.
Maybe it's a placeholder.
What was that, what was some of the stuff that that was?
You're talking about stormwater, right?
No, they're talking about number one on page four.
I know it, but it's, it, to me, it sounded like they're talking about stormwater.
And I, I am confusing it and I'm looking at the standard.
On page three, you look at sixteen, it says stormwater.
No, you're, Bob, you're right, this set, this standard says, is there any state level, uh, in addition to the planning board level approval for this site plan? And the only thing was the stormwater.
Permit by rules.
Permit by rules.
So.
It does belong there.
In the last one.
Page three, six, number sixteen.
Yeah. Should we say that again?
Well, no, so in the last one, um, it was checked off, it's not applicable, not subject to DEP site review. So if we just say it's met.
Which one are you looking at?
But it was.
Under, under specific standards, one.
Which page?
Which is page, which four? Four.
It's already marked as met.
Yeah, but it's what she wrote for the reasoning and applicant is what Laura brought up, the applicant is before the planning board.
Can you say C and then go back to the other thing, so the state?
Well, the state one isn't mentioned anywhere, so that's why I was putting it there. I don't think it hurts to put it there, um, only, you know.
Saying that they did do what they needed to do.
They did do it, yes.
Yeah, it's just.
Just saying they're, here doesn't say they've done it.
And all the one that, so we can have the same language.
I, I thought this whole discussion started because you had, you thought the reporting of applicant is before the planning board was not accurate.
Well, no, it, I, I, we've never used it before to describe the situation where an applicant might have to go either for state subdivision or site plan approval. And we never use this language before, we usually said if it's met, it's because they have already gotten or submitted something.
Right, right.
Well, then can we say they've submitted and?
Yeah, that's what I should say.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Jess is doing, right, which I needed DEP stormwater approval and we added MDOT. We, we, we can give it as many as we want. MDOT, uh, was.
Approval of pain. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
DEP approval of pain.
So, so let one question.
Yeah.
Well, I was frustrated, what's up?
Exactly what I was doing, what page and what?
We are on page four and we are in section B, specific standard number one.
Okay.
And we're just trying to get the language right on the reasons.
Okay, so what are you gonna do about page three, number sixteen?
We can say, uh, MD, uh, DEP, state DEPs, stormwater permit by rule is approved. Storm.
Yeah.
Stormwater approval by rule.
I, my only, my only concern on that is that, I wanted to, I was looking to see if I had others, find a fact, lots of the pile. But my only concern is, we're saying there's something there, but there's no proof.
But there never is proof.
The proof is that he submitted it and I would assume.
Two weeks past or that he didn't.
Say you submitted it.
I have a copy of it, you ever had a last?
Okay, so just, like, could we get, would it help if we got a copy of that? His, his, what he submitted to the state and that he hasn't heard back from them, which means it is permitted.
It's just strange.
I know it is, but it's the state.
Sometimes I wish we got our copies.
I know.
Yeah, that's, I mean, even an email's safe, but, yeah, I mean, whatever. Whatever works, I agree with, but.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we just, we just don't agree that, uh, they don't get anything.
So we, we need, we need a copy.
Don't forget that their application probably has in one of these sections.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what I thought.
The fact that they submitted it, so I'm just.
That's what I thought.
Does it give amount of time that you have to give your back?
Here it is, it's under tab seven.
Two weeks, okay.
It's under tab seven.
So it's submitted back in March.
We're good, it's been two weeks. Okay.
I'm fine with that, I just, it's just stupid that they go.
Well, go to the state and tell them that.
Send yourself this, to cover your own head.
Yeah, I think we're good on page four now.
Page four, yeah.
I think we have page five now, we have, we have blanks.
Yeah, so we have thirteen blank.
Yes, okay, no.
Thirty thirteen.
Additional improvements, planning board may require?
I would say NA, not.
It's not answered.
NA, none, no improvements required, no additional improvements required.
Everyone good with that?
We're just trying to, there's several of these that aren't answered.
Yeah, she does that when we have to discuss it, I mean, 'cause she doesn't dare to answer them for us.
Who's she?
Oh, Courtney.
So, there's, we don't want any, we don't want any additional improvements?
What additional improvements do you want?
So, she did this.
I didn't say I wanted to ask.
I put NA in there.
Yeah, I put NA.
You know, I think the improvements would be to, like, like landscaping is sidewalks.
Or, or putting gutters on, or.
Right, right.
Okay, so we're down to number seventeen.
Seventeen, and she didn't check it off, but the plan is so noted, and I think we have to say met.
I think we should say met, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Eighteen?
I say met because, um, the, uh, we can even say that the, um, height of the, what it, is that the right terminology? The height of the building was reduced to be more reflective of, um, abutting properties?
Well, that's right.
None of that in the, that in the color.
In the color.
And color.
Yeah, it's not, it's not so much the height, because the height is, is, you not really even notice when one's here, and one's here, one's halfway between.
We didn't ask them to change the heights, did we?
I spoke about the heights, 'cause I noticed that the two other buildings were both slung, and that's when, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. John said, you know what, we're in discussions about lowering that, and that will make a big difference in how it will be perceived. So, I, I'm fine by simply saying the color plans for exterior, um, materials, um, it relates appropriately to, to, um, abutting properties.
Okay, everyone good with that language? So, nineteen, I mean, page six?
C.
C, um.
Oh, no, never mind, I, I.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay, page six.
Okay, everyone good with six? Seven? So, have you received a state fire marshal permit yet?
No, I think that's part of the building permit application, if I'm understanding correctly.
Okay.
We received a letter from Mike.
We got a letter from Joe.
Yeah, I thought it was in there.
Should we say that, I mean, it, we courtney, or would they want the letter from the state fire chief? Should we say that once they get it, it would be in their folder, just to cover them?
Well, it's part of the condition of approval.
Yeah, so.
That's true. They'll have to be in there.
It's, it's, it's number three in conditions of approval.
Can we take a look at all the conditions of approval, and see if anyone has any questions about that?
These are all states. We didn't add any as a portion. Again, I would like to propose maybe one more, not because I don't trust people implicitly, but I do. I think it should say, should you encounter a need to change any of the colors of any of the materials or type of materials for the exterior that you so generously shared with us, you'll, um, you know, that will be, um.
An amendment to the site plan?
Yeah, because it's a very important thing that we have been working on, to try to keep a kind of village rural character piece. And it may be that you go to order something, and it's like, oh my God, I can't get this, this is too expensive.
Yeah, don't go without the name.
Huh?
Don't go without the weapon name. Well, I mean, we, we did it with Dunkin' Donuts, and they worked with us, and it came out nice.
Yeah.
It's not, and you guys work with us in the color, and it looks.
Very nicely, and it's very much appreciated to have that.
Yeah, it looks, it looks great.
An amendment to this, 'cause it's something like that.
So, the amendment I would propose as a condition is that should any of the exterior material types or colors need to change from what was represented at the, um, site plan approval meeting, it will require a re-review by this board.
Um, and can we add one more to that?
Question on that, though, so a re-review, that's, um.
Not of the whole thing, but you just come back and say, can't get this product.
Just wanted to make sure that we clarified.
Yeah, we're not going back through the whole thing again, no, we won't be out walking.
No, no, no.
We're not.
We don't want to.
We're not gonna.
Good clarification.
How about, can we add a condition of approval as far as a construction dumpster, and just, you're gonna do that anyway, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
So, we, so we have amendments, should any of the exterior materials types or colors represented at site review change, it will require a re-review of the exterior material, exterior materials or types?
Yes.
And then you want to also add?
Construction dumpster will be provided on-site.
That's right.
What was, what was the other side supposed to?
For the, I mean.
There's several types of materials, Jim, there's the metal part, the shingling, uh.
At the main entrance?
Entrance, there's the stone that runs on the bottom border.
Okay, okay, that's what this, that's what the box is.
Yeah, that's the stone.
Okay.
Okay, hope I'm not missing, is there, you'll be having dump, normal, not construction dumpsters, but.
Oh, yeah.
Regular dumpsters.
And those have to.
Yeah, you know, it, right, so.
So, if they're anywhere exposed to Route Two, they're gonna have to be shielded, if there is a back of the property.
That needs to be in conditions, we make it for everybody else.
Yes.
It's not, I mean, that's a part of the, can we change the dumpster statement, to say you only have it shielded if you know exposed on a street, right, front of.
Right, so if it's exposed, we mean a street dumpster.
So, we actually have a dumpster pad on the far side.
Oh, so it's in the back.
Yeah. Yeah, it's around that, on propane tanks.
Right.
Oh, so you're talking day-to-day dumpsters, not.
Yeah, well, you have a store entering, you know.
Not construction.
It's on the backside of this.
Right, so that would be two conditions of approval, number eight will be the construction dumpster on-site for the duration of the construction, which I'm sure you didn't do, anyway, properly this size, and number nine will be the dumpster, well.
You already have it on the plan, I hope you get it.
Yeah, dumpster on the plan.
It's already on the plan, alright, and it does not need to be screened, right?
No, because that's because.
Alright.
Seven hundred.
So, scratched out, okay.
So, so, do we, so there is, so, we won't put anything, we're just asking this, we're covering anything. They are gonna have a fence around, to screen the utilities and the propane tank.
It's on the plan, so we're approving the plan.
Yeah, all it is saying is a fence to screen the utilities, and a new propane tank, and the dumpster. It just says, the fence only says to screen the utilities, we haven't discussed anything about how the fence is gonna be like we usually do.
To screen the dumpster?
Whether we screen the dumpster or not, but they're, they've got on the plans to screen the utilities.
I don't think that.
I don't know that we ever.
I don't think that's in our apartment.
Well, nobody's ever said they're gonna screen the utilities, but if they're screening the dumpster, the, the material would be similar to what the building is.
They don't have to.
And we do, we do talk about fencing height and all that stuff.
Usually when we're trying to screen in a butter's property, we're very concerned about that.
So, I just wanna get it out there, so we're covering.
What are you talking about, like a big propane tank that you wanted?
Well, typical, having to do with the trash dumpster and the fencing, typically, what we do with that is a seater, and, yep, and eight feet tall. I just, ten by twelve pad, and then wraps around all four sides, when indoors.
Like, a chain link fence with slats, like what somebody else did.
Towns don't allow that.
Doesn't go over.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't try that.
That's perfect. That's perfect.
I don't, I like that work, too.
Okay, we're gonna give you that.
It would kind of ruin the look of your whole beautiful building, wouldn't it?
Right.
Maybe it was slats.
I, I still have one thing, and that's, they need to look at signage?
That will, they have to get a permit from Randy, right?
Okay, yes, one of their signs that they have is a hundred and forty-some square feet, it's way over.
Way over size?
Yeah.
They won't let that fly.
This, it's not in our, we used to do that, we don't, it's not in our perky anymore, they don't sign it.
What do you need for a motion?
We need, I mean, the question.
Is there anything else, something, anything with me, just cause you get forward, I'll do the motion.
Yes.
No.
What do you need for a motion?
We need a motion, um, to approve the findings of fact as drafted? All in favor?
An approval of the actual site plan?
Yeah, and then we need an approval of the actual site plan.
I need a motion to approve the site.
Okay.
So, actually, the.
Five seconds. What's that, I'm sorry, Jim is asking a question.
They're distracting the chair.
That's not hard to do.
It's nice not to rush through things, and.
He, he wants to know if, if the parking is actually going to be striped, is that what we say that?
Yeah, so you're gonna be striping, so every, everything that's on the plan, I'm just making sure. We've had others that have done it, and boards have rushed through things, and three or four years down the road, people are going, well, you didn't make them do it, how come we gotta do it?
Well, Sporthoma doesn't have striping, and neither does the building on the other side of that.
Actually, the ones next door does have it, but they.
Sporthoma?
I can't remember about Sporthoma, but I got an idea.
Ours, ours is gonna have striping, and it's gonna be, they need to get spots, there're gonna be labels, there's gonna be signs. I'd love to do that for our customers, too, in town.
Alright. Okay, is that okay, Jim? He said it's gonna be striped.
The way it's discussed, we're all covering our tails.
Definitely.
Do, um, so I can, I got a first on a motion to, for the site plan, to approve the site plan, do I get a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay. Let's, what do we wanna sign here, um, do you want a big one?
I brought several copies of the full-size site plan with a block to sign.
Sure, perfect.
Well, I guess this one's.
Her is prepared.
Shane, that would be great.
Sure, I figured we need two, probably one for your records and one for ours, if that's.
Would you like these back? We've got, we have this.
Shane, you want the?
Do you guys want any of these?
I know how much these cost. They're gorgeous.
Uh, no, they're free orders.
To write this, your application letter.
All these, the contractors.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I would, just to see if you get to someone who can use it. We do these.
We're gonna sign, he actually created a signature.
Yeah, sorry.
And here's two copies.
One copy here, I'll bring you.
Yeah.
Uh, do you guys wanna come, come over here, too?
Sure.
Sure, we're gonna pass the whole thing around.
I have made a mess tonight.
I know, I was asking, I feel like.
Is your sign in here?
To John, the guy in the fat shirt.
If you want, if you want, you can have two pretty others. John, if you want more, can I?
Yeah, one copy would be my thing.
I just gave her to mine. That's alright. It happens all the time.
You approve chairman?
We'll wrap one of those copies and send it in. If I haven't already, I'm sending you the most happy. That's one I, I saw, why I seen one, I don't want.
We're gonna adjourn. Hey, chair, we have other things to do.
Stand up!
We have a motion to adjourn.
We have other things to do.
You have more business?
More business, thank you, guys.
Really, thank you very much.
Yeah, that feels excellent.
Five years, sorry.
Oh, and if you decide to put in a flower bed, let me know, I have a million for it.
Do you have an estimated date for a ground, or do you?
I'm not a handful.
A notional hopeful, do you wanna say it?
How could you sign two?
Yeah, we want two, right? We'll be getting the earthwork contract lined up, we're just discussing it, process. We're gonna plan for the actual building permits, the state fire marshal permit, so, we're taking a lot of, a lot of stuff we do.
Do we want, are you open this year, do we want to just forgive those, sign this?
Yeah, ideally, I was hoping we're starting by the end of summer, the latest.
As a, as a real estate broker, I prefer you have a big one.
We're gonna turn it to the state and.
Thank you, Shane, it's nice to see you, Ken.
Thank you, guys, very good.
When are you gonna break ground?
I'm just talking about that, I'm sorry, yeah.
Still gonna do building permit, state fire marshal permit.
John, another one?
Waiting for, um, number for cross excavation, and I'll have my list scheduled to move forward with him.
Do you want any of these?
No, I.
It's gonna be like three times the size of the current building.
Okay.
Good one.
So, what's nine, I don't know. I won't even know the answer, so, do we have any additional listing?
Do you need help?
Oh, here it is. Do we have? Hey, do we have any other business? Mr. Robert?
Thank you.
Sue, hi, thanks. Sue, is there anything else?
Not for me.
Jim?
Um, well, I can't remember.
Jim, did you report off on the thing we talked about for, as a possible changes?
I, I, I put down ninety-six, six E, what is correct, and that's on the, uh.
The?
The fifty thousand dollar.
Yep, a value from inscription.
Change of the square.
So, it, I know that it was proposed to change the stuff to square feet, I don't know if that did get changed. And that was the last year, so I can't remember, so I need the, I need, I need some, I need some reading about that.
Alright.
So, our next meeting would be?
May tenth?
And I am not here on May tenth.
Oh.
Oh, wait, there are.
Neither am I.
I am, I am.
I know I'm not.
Well.
RV land.
Might as well say it, I'm not, maybe.
Wow, we can have a meeting, we're not rushing.
We have.
I'll be in so long.
We're still recording.
We actually have a large board, so that we have.
Flexibility.
We can, we have that flexibility.
Don't worry about it, everybody has someone.
She's not here, we need four people.
You need four, we have to have all of us and Jody.
Jody, yeah.
I'll be here.
One, two, three, we have five of.
Jody.
Yeah, you need, you need to have five out of seven, no, you need to have four out of seven.
No, we need to have four. Yeah, so, um, the twenty-fourth, and I guess we only have one meeting in June, at the end of the month.
Yeah, I'll leave, I'll, I'll town these two, but then back. We have, um.
We could have, we may have one the twenty-fourth of May. That would be two weeks after the tenth, if anything's on.
There, there is a lot of stuff coming up, I do know that.
Right, so I think we may end up with.
She told me, we're pretty much booked right.
Somewhere in here, she put the next meetings on one of these pieces of paper, and I cannot find it.
It's on the second page of.
From the agenda?
Oh, there they are, yeah, May tenth, May twenty-four.
Okay.
So.
There's a, there's a public hearing, there's a public meeting for all the ordinance stuff.
When?
On May fifteenth at six o'clock, Crescent Park. Or is it Telstar?
Well, that's a big difference.
I think it's Telstar.
I won't be here.
Public meeting.
Did she put in for something at Crescent Park?
Maybe it's Crescent Park. Town meeting is at Crescent Park.
That's on the, uh, fourteenth.
May, you could come on the fourteenth on Sunday, but you're not getting in the building.
May fifteenth.
June fourteen, town meeting is, voting is the thirteen.
Town meeting is the fourteen.
What is May fifteenth again?
May fifteenth is the public hearing for all the ordinances.
All of them.
That are.
Why isn't that, just a question, why isn't that on the, on the warrant?
What?
Why aren't all the ordinances on the warrant for the fourteenth?
For June, they are.
I thought you said the meeting was for the fifteenth.
That's.
That's the public hearing.
So, May fifteenth Monday is the public hearing?
I have a real problem with the process they use for public hearings.
I know.
That will be in a public hearing.
All they can do is comment, that thing can be changed. All they can do is comment, that can be changed.
People make comments, and the people responsible for how it's presented in the warrant can't make any changes. Then why hold the public hearing?
I agree.
Because I would stand up at the town meeting and say if I.
Because basically what it does is it, the way it was explained to me.
That makes no sense, I'm just.
Is it was, back in the day, that it was, it's to speed up.
The town meeting?
The town meeting, and allow people, because it's basically a question so that people will come, come and say, okay, now I have, now I have an understanding of what it is, now I can do a, now I can vote on it.
Can they change, can they bring up changes on the June fourteenth meeting? Okay, so what they're doing is, it's more like prepping for June.
So the only thing that can be done at town meeting is it either gets approved or denied.
Oh, my gosh.
You can make amendments, you can make your main amendment, right?
Not to codes. Because a code has to go, a code has to get written, or changed, or whatever.
By the lawyer.
Then it has to go to a lawyer, then it has to come back, get, let's use the word thing.
This is written where?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, but we can make changes to money, like entitlements or something, we can change that.
Yeah, so you can, you can, all you can do is vote an ordinance upper than, if that will, you can't change that.
Anything else? Make a motion, no adjourn?
I'm sorry, it, it passed a second time, and then, all in favor? All right.